I mean tonight's meeting of the Board of Selectmen for the 5th of September 2012. Any changes to the agenda on the board? Seeing none, the agenda will proceed as it is presented. Announcements, Libby.
The first announcement is that the Massachusetts State Primary will be held tomorrow, September 6th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the high school. And we have a proclamation from the Nantucket Suicide Prevention Coalition. September is National Suicide Prevention Month, and I think you guys have a proclamation in your packet to read.
And I see Jenny is here, and she'd like us to read it, so I will proceed to do that. National Suicide Prevention Month, September 2012, proclamation for the town of Nantucket, whereas suicide is the 10th-leading cause of all deaths in the United States and the third-leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 15 and 24, whereas in the United States, one person completes suicide every 14.2 minutes. Whereas it is estimated that 4.73 million people in the United States are survivors of suicide loss, whereas an increase in the overall suicide rate in our country was seen in 2009, representing a change in the recent pattern of stability or slight declines. Whereas suicide is a community problem, and thus there must be a community response through various initiatives to reduce suicidal behaviors. Whereas Nantucket Suicide Rate is 1.5 times higher than the state of Massachusetts. Whereas the Nantucket Suicide Prevention Coalition, which is dedicated to reducing the frequency of suicide attempts and deaths through education, awareness, and action. Whereas a great many suicides are preventable, therefore it be resolved that we, the Nantucket Board of Selectmen, do hereby designate September as National Suicide Prevention Month in the town and county of Nantucket, Massachusetts. It's a proclamation. Do I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
I think we're going to vote in favor of this to make September our Suicide Prevention Month. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, thank you Jenny very much.
Can I just?
Sure. Sorry. I'll be very brief. You have in your packet also a number of statistics. We work very closely with the Barnstable County. We have the Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition. I go to that meeting monthly. I'm the treasurer there, and so you have some facts that are for the Cape and Islands because they have people that do this, all the data there, that are paid by the county. So that's why it's included in the Cape and Islands. But just so you know, what we do on a regular basis here on Nantucket, this past year we did two bullying conferences, one in the fall with Rachel Simmons. She's a national specialist and has written books, and that was for parents, teachers, and students, and it was a two-day program that gave CEUs to the teachers and the clinicians. We've done two workshops on self-injurious behavior for parents and teachers, and that's by Dr. Barry Walsh, in the fall and in the spring, again offering credit to clinicians and teachers. Two community forums sponsored by the Department of Mental Health in conjunction with the Nantucket Cottage Hospital, Nantucket Public Schools, and the Nantucket Athanam, and we did one in the fall and one in the spring. And ongoing projects, we do the Signs of Suicide that screens kids for depression in the high school, and now we go down into, as far as the 7th grade. We do a senior boost program to get the seniors prepared to make that transition when they leave high school, because that's often challenging for some students. We send a letter home to parents at the end of school to alert them for the transitions and what to look for. We have, the VA sends over a clinician now to work with our vets monthly, and we have a program going on called Real Men, Real Depression. We have the Safe Harbor Suicide Support Group, and that's for people who have lost family members to suicide. We're doing a depression screening in this month, and we are, there's a, the International Suicide Prevention Association is asking on December 10th, Wednesday night, December 10th at 8 o'clock, to light a candle for someone who has died by suicide and their family members. So we have, we are constantly doing projects. I'll be at the Elder's Expo, and we're just always putting projects in place, and please feel free to contact me if you have any thoughts or questions.
Great, thanks. Jenny, want to say Elder Expo again?
It is this Saturday, 9:30 to 10:00. No, 9:30 to noon, I was hoping.
Shorten your day.
Yeah, 9:30 to noon, at the high school cafeteria.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks Jenny.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Madam Chairman, I have one more announcement, which will be printed on your agenda next week, to remind everybody. The Island Fair is Saturday, September 15th and 16th, Saturday and Sunday. Senator Wolf and Representative Madden will be there on Saturday from 11:00 to 12:00. They are both on the Joint Committee for the Environment, Natural Resources, and Agriculture, and they'll be available to answer any questions about those topics. They also, their agriculture category also includes aquaculture, and there's lots of activities out there, so we are really encouraging people to attend, including you all.
Thank you. I think they were encouraging us to volunteer, too.
I think Libby's already staked out some territory.
All right, she did. She took the best off. All right, public comment tonight. Anyone here for public comment? Carol?
Carol Dunton. I had two concerns. I did know, driving by the schools the other day, that the crosswalks prior to school had not been painted. I know we have new equipment and everything that we've purchased in the last year, and it would seem that would be a healthy and safe, you know, a safety issue to make sure, because some of those are really quite worn. The other thing is, walking in town in August with my grandchildren, and I think it's the extension of larger vehicles, some of the side streets are, you can't walk certain areas of them because there's a car parked on them. I'm going to attend roads and, right away, no, not roads and traffic safety meeting at some point, but I think that should be a real concern for us, as far as the town core is pedestrian-friendly, but we seem to be deferring to vehicles a bit much. Thank you.
Thanks Carol, very much. Any other comments from the public, for matters not on the agenda? Right, seeing none. New business from the board?
No.
Seeing none. Approval of minutes, warrants, and pending contracts. Approval of minutes from the 13th of June 2012. Any comments, corrections? Seeing none, that, those are approved. Approval of payroll warrant for weeks ending 26th August 2012 to September 2012. Comments there? Seeing none, that is approved. Approval of treasury warrant for 29th August 2012 and 5th September 2012. No changes there, that is approved. Approval of pending contracts for 5th September 2012, as set forth on the spreadsheet identified as Exhibit 1, which exhibit is incorporated herein by reference. Libby?
We have just one contract for Our Island Home with Bruce Glass. It's an amount up to $17,000, depending on how much services will be needed. Mr. Glass will be interim administrator of Our Island Home while the administrator is out on maternity leave.
And some of you may remember Mr. Glass, he's a consultant that worked with us previously when we were looking at options there, so he was great, actually.
He's been with us a number of years.
Yes, he's very familiar with the operation and the island.
All right, comments, questions for Libby? Seeing none. That contract is approved, unless we need a vote, I think probably we find consensus, right?
Yep.
All right. Next section, Citizen Department's Request. We have a few appointments that we're still looking to make. I didn't grab my hard copy of the agenda, so I'm going back and forth a little tonight, but we're starting with the Agricultural Committee. We have one vacancy, two vacancies, I'm sorry. One applicant, Michelle Whelan, who may not be here, but I think we all know Michelle.
There's a second.
Two spots and two applicants?
Where's the other applicant?
Jessie Picas.
Oh, okay.
Jessie Picas.
I missed that. So we have two applicants, and we have two different vacancies. One is the, one will be up in 2013 and one in 2015. So why don't we do our little note here and just put the year next to the name?
Or maybe just give the first one to apply the longest term? How's that sound?
I like that, Rick. That's what I was going to do.
I was going to say that.
All right, so Michelle Whelan, who came in to the application process earliest, will be the 2015 seat, and.
Jessica Picas.
It's a great solution. Yep.
Thank you. Okay, Capital Program Committee, we have one vacancy, two applicants, Joseph Isit Grous Jr. and Peter Morrison. So if you could just write down your selection. Bob votes Morrison, Bruce Morrison, Atherton is Grous, and I voted Morrison, so Mr. Morrison has the spot. Council for Human Services, two vacancies, we have two applicants, but I'd like to make a note about one of the applicants we have in the past, not necessarily filled seats, and one of the applicants is related to the current chair of the board. So I personally would just like the board to know that we don't always have to fill the seats. So if we wanted to just put down your proposals, both are 2015 seats, and feel free to put one or two names.
We have two applicants?
Yes, Anne Stackpole.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, it comes up on the next page in black.
Oh, it does? Okay. We have a vote for Mance from Bob. We have a vote for both Annie Stackpole and Peter Morrison from Bruce, the same for Mr. Atherton, and Mance, just Mance from mine. So I guess procedurally, we're tied, where certainly Mance gets in and does Morrison didn't get the call, the call.
I guess he didn't get a majority. We either revote, or we say that that's equivalent to a no vote.
Okay. What was the board's pleasure there? It's really up to you. I think we're just going to come out the same way.
We could have a revote.
Yeah. Do a revote?
Let's do a revote.
Do a revote, just so that.
I just have a concern about a husband and wife being on the same board.
Right.
So stick to your vote if that's the way, you know.
Right. So basically, you wouldn't, you would submit a no vote, or nothing. Just for the one candidate.
Yeah, just one seat.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, you're fine.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We have no vote, no vote, Bruce, myself, and Bobby, and Mr. Atherton votes Morrison, so Mr. Morrison is not appointed. We still have a vacancy on that board. All right. Finance Committee, we have one vacancy, two applicants, Tobias Glidden and Julia Linder. You know the rest. We have a vote for Ms. Linder from Atherton. We have a vote for Ms. Linder from Miller, same for Mr. DiCosta and myself, so we have a filled seat with Julia Linder. Congratulations, she's here. If I missed anyone else who's here, too, I apologize. Parks and Rec, we have one applicant, one vacancy. Can we say by consensus? That's good.
Good for me.
Good for me. Tara Kelly is the new appointee. Scholarship Committee, same, we have one applicant and one vacancy.
Same.
All right, that's Leslie Forbes.
Tree Advisory is the same.
Tree Advisory, we're in the same place, so we're now complete with consensus there?
Do we need to follow through on the question of designation of a special municipal employee? Did I read something about that with Ben Shampoo?
I put it out in there.
Did you put it out?
Well, we.
I don't know if that's required. If it is, we just at some point have to deal with it?
I think at some point, we, I know, sorry.
I was just going to say, I inadvertently forgot to do this. We should see if they're already designated as special municipal. They're not?
We talked at one point about making all the committees special municipal employees to deal with this, and we've been doing it as we find they need to be, so if, that being said, I would make a motion that the, is it the Tree Committee? Is that what we're talking about?
Tree Advisor.
Tree Advisory Committee become special municipal employees, and it doesn't become an issue.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Yes.
Yes. I made the mistake tonight of not getting a hard copy of the agenda, so I have to keep flipping back and forth.
Erica, I want to abstain from the appointment of Ben.
Now I went all the way back to my library.
It's hard to go back and forth. Now you have my special notes on there, Patty, so watch out.
Coming up the next page.
You got to go to a page saver.
Yep, we're good with the Tree Advisory Committee. Libby, there was a list of non-voting taxpayers, so that's a.
You just, you have one more item. Your Nantucket ICE item.
Yeah. Oh, I see, okay, I'm sorry. Nantucket ICE appeal a penalty fee for delay in annual building inspection. So we have a request from Nantucket ICE to waive a fee of $200 for their late fee, penalty fee, and delay of their inspection. Comments from the board?
Well, I've consistently voted against waiving fees. This looked like there might be, I have to go back and read this, but it sounds like they were saying they tried to schedule something and ran into a problem in that regard, and I don't know if that's true or not.
I can say from my own experience, it took me two months to get my alarm and my house inspected, so I could get the rate on the insurance proper.
So if that's the case, I have a little sympathy. Normally, I have a straight no vote on these, so I'll share that with you.
Okay. Any other comments? Did you want to make a comment, Steve, about this? No? Or Lynn?
I'm from the Nantucket.
Can you come up to the, no, sorry. Make this fully torturous.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm the executive director from the Nantucket ICE, and I did start in May calling the company that does the annual test, and it didn't happen until the last week of August, so I just thought it was worth, you know, pleading to you to waive that fee, because we could definitely use the money for other things at the rank. Thank you.
I just asked a question, Patty, is there, are there, I guess maybe through you, Libby or Steve, are there 27 of these or just one? I mean, this looks like it might be a common issue, and I just don't know the underlying facts here.
We do inspections of all the places of assembly, all the restaurants, so there are over 200 of these. It happens every year that people have difficulty getting a hold of their alarm people, particularly to do the inspections. I don't know this particular company, but I know it, they run into it. They're obligated to have their inspection when they expire, prior to their expiration, and everybody knows that, so, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Any other comments from the board, questions? Do I have a motion? Not yet.
You know, in spite of what I said, what I seemed to hear from Steve was that you got lots of people, they all know they need it, and somehow they get it done. Otherwise, I think we'd have 27 folks in here looking for waivers. So $200 is a lot of money, but it's not that much money, even for the Nantucket ICE, so I guess I'm not applying to move forward with a waiver.
Any other comments? Can you put that in form of a motion?
Well, I would move that the board not grant a waiver for the waiving of a $200 late fee for the certificate of occupancy inspection for the Nantucket ICE.
Thank you. Second?
Second. What's the, the normal fee's 50? Is that, what's the normal fee, Steve, 50?
Correct.
I have to do inspections all the time. We get them done.
Yeah. I mean, I feel for it, but it's, you know, you just.
Just because you're a nonprofit, I understand, but if we open up this door, then it's open.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. Town Manager Report, Advisory Committee of Non-Voting Taxpayers Appointment, Libby?
By charter and prior board vote, the Town Manager is authorized to make appointments to the Advisory Committee of Non-Voting Taxpayers. There are a number of committee members. We had a couple of, well, several really, vacant seats, and we don't always fill them all, but we do have an applicant, Mr. Tony Walsh, who's interested in serving, and I would appoint him with your endorsement.
Great. Any problems, questions?
No, I just, one comment. I think they have had, what, two or three meetings this summer?
Several, yep.
I sense they're just more active than they were five years ago.
I would say.
That's a good sign.
Great. All right. Next item is the audit. 2012 Audit Status.
We've been trying to give you all regular updates about the audit, as a result of an audit committee maybe a month or two ago, to give the board public updates. Irene is here, Finance Director, to give you an update about where we are with the fiscal '12 audit. And as you know, the Department of Revenue has mandated, basically, that we have our audit done and to them by November 1st, before they will certify free cash or help with the tax rate.
Irene Laravee, Town and County Finance Director. As far as for the audit, typically, we have everything to the auditors by the end of October 31st, and then we get a final audit by December 31st. By DOR setting the November 1st standard, we actually escalated the audit process by two months. The auditors have everything from the town, with the exception of the final airport single audit report that's being done by a third party. We've been informed that he'll provide that by September 15th. I've spoken to our partner with Powers &amp; Sullivan. She indicated that would not delay the delivery of our final audit. The next step in the process is Powers &amp; Sullivan, our audit firm, will be going through all the documents we submitted to them over the next two weeks, and then they'll be here for their final field work the first two weeks of October. So as of right now, we're on target to deliver that on time.
Questions for Irene? Bob?
Irene, I see in here that the land bank's in the process of doing theirs. Are they on track as well?
Yes, I confirmed that with Jessie yesterday.
Other questions?
Just on the cash reconciliations, which I always think of as our sort of first line, we have, have we reconciled all the June 30 accounts at this point?
Yes, all June 30 is complete, and July 31st is almost 100% complete for the town, and that's actually ahead of schedule by about 15 days.
Good, glad to hear it.
Great.
Great. Any other comments?
Thank you, Irene.
Thank you very much. Finally, well, maybe not finally, but review of 2012 Special Town Meeting Warrant Articles.
Okay, this activity happened on this while I was away. The Planning Director has submitted several articles, which he's going to take you through, zoning and real estate-related. I think our intent was to try to keep this warrant as compact as possible. It has expanded a bit, and we have, I think, four citizen articles that were submitted. So you have in your packet, what I did before I left, which was a list of preliminary town articles, not including the citizen articles, and then I believe that you were sent a draft, very preliminary draft warrant.
We did.
Before tonight, so if you have that handy, look at that, because that has all of the articles in it. You'll see that they need some work, so don't pay too, too much attention to the wording, just the idea of the article. So beginning with Article 1, 1, 2, and 3, and 4 are all financial articles, and this is the main reason why we're having the Special Town Meeting. The first one would be to, if needed, amend the general fund operating budget for fiscal '13, in case the airport needs us to do that. That is not entirely determined yet, but it's looking less like we need to do that. Article 2 would be to amend enterprise fund budgets for fiscal '13, and based on end-of-year revenue and expenses for all of them, there may be, there are going to need to be adjustments to not just the airport, but others. I think solid waste, so all, so all of them, solid waste sewer, Island Home, and I don't know what want to comment. Yes? Okay. So that information is all being put together now, and will be in the form of a Finance Committee motion, the details, but we will need that article. We also have some capital expenditure amendments, prior capital projects that have already been approved, for the most part, and a couple even came up today. Irene, I haven't had a chance to talk to you about them, but they relate to sewer projects. And there are, although I believe this is mostly airport, there is a want-to-comment item as well for, in connection with Phase 2B Downtown Sewer Rehab Project.
Sure.
So the first three are definitely needed. Prior-year articles, I think that's a definite as well, and we're looking at articles that have already been approved, capital, I guess these would be, that may need to be re-appropriated for particular purposes. I guess actually that's where the sewer projects come in. Article, and these are numbered this way for now, you all, of course, can change the order however you wish, but I thought it would be best to get the important ones out of the way right at the beginning, so that's 1, 2, 3, and 4. 5.
Could I just go back to those for one second?
Sure.
On the financial articles, they seem very general, so again, we're doing the work to see what we actually need to do.
Yep.
And I appreciate that often we incorporate what we intend to do in the Finance Committee recommendations, but I'd also like to feel that we will have time here to make sure we understand, because these are, they're our articles, if you will.
Yes.
First and foremost, so I want to be comfortable that we have enough time to go over the facts and numbers related to them.
You should. You are next, next week you are scheduled to adopt the warrant, per the schedule that we endorsed on July 9th. And subsequent to that, the Finance Committee has its public hearing on the warrant articles on Monday, September 24th. You will be reviewing additional comments, any draft FinCom motions that are available at that point at your meeting on September 26th. And then on October 3rd, you will adopt any recommendations that you all have, or comments to the articles. There should be enough time for that, if we need.
So we would anticipate scheduling some agenda items to go over them at this meeting.
The 26th, and then again on the 3rd.
Yeah, and if we have any ready, or the ideas of them ready, we can get them to you.
Sooner you get them out.
Beforehand.
And although we're saying we're adopting, we're essentially sending it forward for discussion, so.
At this point, yeah.
Yeah, next week.
Thanks.
Currently, Article 5 is a citizen warrant article, an appropriation for the Maticet landfill wind turbine. I believe there's been discussion about this at a Finance Committee meeting last week or the week before, and if you want to mention about the appropriation.
With this article, we already have a balanced budget in the general fund. The only general fund change will be the addition of the debt service for Homic Pond Bike Path, so there's not available funds to support the appropriation. If the board and the Finance Committee choose to go forward with this article, it will be subject to a debt exclusion override, so that would come back to the board to consider to have a ballot vote on this item.
Are we required to go forward?
No, and if you, for whatever reason, I'm just playing out all options, decided that you did want to fund this, it would have, the money would have to come from somewhere. So either general fund budgets are cut to provide the funding for this, or, as Irene is saying, you could agree to a ballot question, however, that is going to delay even more the setting of the tax rate, because you'd have to then schedule.
Do we even have to put this on the town meeting ballot?
Yes, it's a citizen warrant article that's been properly submitted.
And I was at the Finance Committee meeting that Irene was at, and I think it's pretty fair to say that as they started to go through this, a number of the same questions and issues that we had before it came up, and I think the committee felt quite strongly that there clearly isn't time to go through that kind of a process in time for the Special Town Meeting, so.
So strategic, I mean, in terms of process, could we, as early as next week, basically say we don't send that one forward for consideration?
Well, it has to remain.
We have to, but I think we can say if we're ready, Patty, that we would not recommend.
Oh, I see.
You would not support it. You can say that as early as right now, if you wanted to.
It just seems clear that when you start going through all that's necessary to process this kind of a capital request, it just.
Right. Well, that's why I asked if we had to go forward, and everyone said yes, but I.
This is a citizen warrant article, so it does need to go forward, but as Rick indicated, you can say you choose not to recommend to the Finance Committee.
Excellent, okay. Sorry, let me interrupt.
That's okay. So the next article is one that we discussed, I think, a couple of weeks ago about authori, seeking town authorization to move departments that are currently at 16 Broad Street and 22 Federal Street to the town-owned building at 37 Washington Street, and we've discussed why we are doing this, so that we can relocate finance offices out of the Mooney Building into 37 Washington Street, which is presently empty, so that we can facilitate the sale of the Mooney Building.
Just to get a question on the table, as long as we're on this one. And I understand all that logic and sort of the rationale to go to town meeting, but there are some options here, like you could have a time limit or not, or, you may have discussed all this before putting the warrant on with this language, because the language is very permanent, as I read it, the way it is right now.
This is draft language. You can, you all can.
Well, just to share, that may or may not be an issue, or how we're going to discuss and deal with this.
Yeah, I mean, I think obviously our intent is that this is a temporary move until 20 South Water Street is renovated, and these departments can move back in there and be downtown. Putting a time limit on it might be a little difficult, because we, of course, are at the mercy of town meeting to get funding for the renovation.
Well, I understand, but sometimes if you put a long enough timeframe, at least it's there, and it lets people know our intent. If you have to re-up it later on, anyway, you have to figure that out.
I would worry a little bit about if people didn't want to re-up it, where would these departments then go if the Mooney Building is sold? Meanwhile, however, though, there have been some new developments with FEMA and the flood zone maps with, which will affect the 37 Washington Street Building and, in all likelihood, the 20 South Water Street Building, which may limit the extent of the renovations that can be done to the 20 South Water Street Building. But I think it would at least get us to perhaps that option. I forget which option it was when we did the review of 20 South Water Street, maybe Option 1, which only moved financed offices in there.
Right, there's, I went to the meeting with FEMA, and there is some sobering information with respect to what we can actually do now with the old police station. So it could change the course of the date, and that's, you know, 37 Washington Street is completely in the new map, so.
So it's real complications.
Real complications, yep.
But meanwhile, if I could just give one more plug for the article. The Mooney Building is not a building that can remain housing town offices for very much longer. It just isn't in the proper physical condition for, in a variety of ways. So I think it is important that we get these offices to somewhere that can more.
Don't misunderstand me, I'm all for that.
Okay.
It's just what other things go with it.
Yes, and I agree. We should definitely all be on the same page with that sort of thing.
Do we have the opportunity to appeal or ask for clarification on these FEMA determinations? I mean, it seems pretty arbitrary. Somebody shows up and says, oh, by the way, we're moving the line.
The way they described it, Bruce, and, you know, Andrew understands this a little bit better than I do, as does the fire chief who was there, and some of the, Kathy Ridge, Ridge, staff members who have done this, and maybe we need a presentation. But ultimately, they did some recalculations based on wave action, and they had not taken that into account before. And I guess with all the, you know, the different claims and the like, they felt that this was a necessary calculation. So it extends the map in terms of what they consider to be hazardous flood zone, and it's not as arbit, there's science to it, let's put it that way. It's not as arbitrary as you might make out. But, that being said, there is an appeal period, that's what we're in. So it might be worth having a conversation with respect to the staff that seems to be pretty well-versed in this, because they've done the plan before, and see if we want to write a letter.
We're at least checking the methodology and making sure the calculations are done properly. I mean, people make mistakes, you know.
Did that building flood in the no-name storm? Police department?
Yes, the ground floor.
First floor flooded. And there is a sump pump in there pumping water out of it every day?
I don't know if it's every day, maybe the.
Yeah, in that back room.
I mean, it will take a conversation with architects, too. I mean, these things can be elevated possibly, and I don't know if that building can. I'm just saying that there are solutions.
Yeah.
But it's putting everything back in a different discussion.
I can tell you firsthand that in the no-name storm, 37 Washington Street had two foot of water flowing through it, so. Because I was walking in front of it.
Right, right. And the extension of the zone, you know, again, there is some merit to the fact that they're actually going to be offering flood insurance period. So otherwise, that, all those properties would just be.
The municipals' buildings qualify for that flood insurance?
Yeah, I do believe so. The rates will be higher if we don't mitigate, and we'll, you know, so that's another consideration. But again, I will say that the staff that was in attendance have done this before, and it would probably be worth giving a little briefing. And FEMA said they'd come back, so.
Yeah, we actually talked about this at a cabinet meeting the other day, and we agreed we should bring somebody in here, FEMA probably, for a presentation to you at one of your meetings, and we're also going to be discussing the appeal process for something like 20 South.
Because it impacts both. Actually, the line goes into the town building.
Does it also? So these are important things. We got to, let's get them on the table and deal with them, you know.
Right.
Town building is somewhat elevated, though.
I know, but again, that might be something we, that might be the line we, you know, we ask for redefinition. I mean, if we lose the police station, it would be, you know, I'd like to get the town building out of the consideration.
Irene?
Sorry, from an insurance perspective, we already have the flood insurance on 37 Washington, the Marine Department, Jetties Beach, et cetera. There's three properties that don't have the flood insurance that we would need to expand. There's a town building, 16 Broad, 20 South Water, and a small storied unit that's by Seale Seafood. So that's our impact, we're running the numbers now.
Great, thank you.
Okay, the next several articles are zoning and real estate related, and I would turn to Andrew to take you through those.
Has he promised there are no controversies? I mean, that's what.
There never are.
There never are.
In the warrant, you mean?
Yeah, that's why we were willing to put these on. I'm sort of kidding. Just trying to set Andrew up.
There is a controversial one.
Thank you for that, because that is, in fact, why they're here.
Right.
The, you know, we have the system we have with our open town meeting. Frequently, these, these come up, you know, oh, the warrant just closed, so can you put these on for the next available meeting? And I think once we go through these, you'll see how minor they are.
Good.
And in fact, I think, I've done an analysis, many of these are never called. So while it may seem daunting, and I think we, we thought we were helping you to put the warrant article together while you were on vacation. I guess next time we'll leave it for you. We, these were in the email that I had alerted you to, that these were potential. So the first one involves two lots, it's on the map behind you. It involves a family issue involving one of the properties. Again, it's just the two lots, and it's extending, I'm sorry, an existing district, or, excuse me, or one. We have not had the public hearing on this, but again, I don't, this is a highly non-controversial article, I believe. The next one is an article that we had proposed in the past. Property owner needed time to understand what the implications are. This is the RC2 zone. You've heard me talk about that many times, how we're phasing that out. This would move this particular property from RC2 into industrial. The blue areas on either side are industrial now. What's that? It is Tuscana. And again, this moves property that, if you know the RC2 district, it allows residential 5,000-square-foot lots. This is an area up against the airport boundary, surrounded by industrial properties. I think it's hard not to see that this belongs in an industrial area. That's the use.
Andrew?
Yes?
On that one, why didn't you include the boatyard property in there?
There's properties along Arrowhead that we're going to probably group together. And we may have to look at the, all of the activities that they're doing there may not currently be allowed in an industrial district. So that's going to take a little bit further study.
Okay.
So that's the, oh, sorry. The other one is in Sconset. This was a mistake from last year's article where we did some zoning changes here. There was a difference in the map than the printed article, so some of the properties accidentally got left out. And those property owners have said, gee, could we be considered back at your next town meeting? So again, I think this cures, many of these people were before us when we had our last public hearing and were expressed support to be included in this. It's just really a, there was a typo, basically, that ended up kicking them out.
So they're going to be disruptive if we don't include them?
Maybe.
And the usual question I have here is, you know, are there any, you know, subdivision opportunities that come up because of this, or are we just going from?
On this one?
Equal to equal roughly, or?
Yeah, these are all pre, none of these lots meet the current zoning district. So basically, this puts them all into a conforming district. That's why the original line was drawn where it was. So no subdivision potential. That doesn't, and there isn't any that exists right now.
Thanks.
So that covers the map changes. The other article that isn't a map change deals with the zoning enforcement officer. And the language that we've proposed, and this is something that Libby and I have discussed as part of the, basically, the plus operations, is to make sure that there are alternative people when that person is away. That's one thing I know that Libby was very concerned about, to when, you know, if this particular zoning enforcement person is out on vacation for an extended period of time, that suddenly activities should grind to a halt, which is just something that we don't want to encourage.
Because the way it's written now, it's specific to that whoever's filling that job, period.
Correct.
With all the responsibilities.
Right. The change, the changes would basically allow the town manager to appoint, basically, who would look at the zoning matters in the absence. So there would be different alternative people as well. So there'd be a lead person, and then there would be alternative people.
Just like we have assistant inspectors for when one of the inspectors goes away.
Exactly.
And having, having dealt with that on a certain particular project they work on, it would be helpful to have somebody not have to wait three weeks and then have a backup of work for him when he gets back, you know.
Got you, no problem.
Okay, so that covers, there's four zoning articles, basically, and I believe those were all pre-identified. And this brings you now to your sewer issues.
There are two citizen warrant articles regarding sewer district map changes. One is in Sconset, and the other is in the town sewer district. And Andrew and I did discuss this the other day, that little work group that has Planning Director, Health Officer, and DPW Director will, will convene to apply the criteria to these parcels and so that they can be included in the process for district, sewer district map changes. The next one, you'll see a bunch of strikeouts. I think there were, this was all happening as I was leaving, but I think there were two articles that were submitted that were somehow identical, or there was a question about if they were the same article or not. And what you see that isn't stricken is what Town Council has reviewed, and that is the citizen article. And it's an amendment to the HDC Act. It would be a home rule petition, which completely changes, I think, a lot of things that are in place now. The next, let's see, four or, no, I guess there's more than four. Eight are real estate articles, which Andrew can take you through.
Libby, since the numbers have changed, could you just tell me what the first one is?
I think it's 15 now.
It looks like 15 paper streets, starting off with Pulpus.
Okay, the paper streets first, thank you. Okay. So paper streets are nothing new, you've seen them before. We've had probably five years of these types of articles. I've had various requests. The first one, which is called, quote, Hilltop Road, is a road that does not serve any properties, it's not on the ground. You can see that all of the surrounding properties have frontage on the surrounding streets, and most of that interior is conservation land. So the request is from some of the properties that, you can see there's a house very close down at this end here. So some of them have been concerned about setbacks. Should that road ever be constructed, it's, again, there's really no reason for it. This group in Madaket is, these are leftover streets.
Is that upstairs?
I think it's thunder.
Deeps are porous, you know.
Is there a bomb shelter in this building?
Guess I should have brought my umbrella.
These are leftover streets from 1912, 1914 subdivision there. Most are actually being used as part of the public beach anyway, and this is an effort to clean them up. There is an issue with this house. You can see where it's a little bit located in the way.
When I see streets go into the water, I, and usually these are, if I remember, they're like a taking and a disposition.
Correct.
And on the other hand, we don't have to dispose of anything if we take one of these and we like water access.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the disposition article, the companion article, gives you the option to make those determinations.
Good.
And it would allow you to, for example, in this case, dedicate most of this land to public open space and recreation.
Thanks.
Is it, on that one there, Andrew, if we ever have to go, if we lose the bridge, or we lose the beach there, it breaches into the creek.
Yep.
Does that give us, by taking these, give us options there? Is that what we're kind of thinking?
Here, I think the main motivation is the open space and acquisition down to the beach, or the sort of clarifying the uses. I think you're going to have to go back this way for any future access there. The bridge, here's, this is where the bridge is here.
Right. You know, my, my concern is that someday we lose the barrier beach there, and that becomes open to the Atlantic. And I don't think that bridge can take that kind of abuse, but there's a lot of people down there that need access to their property.
Yep.
So, and you're suggesting we're going to have to go north, or upwards on this map to find another access?
Well, you have Ames Avenue, it was a 50-foot right-of-way here. So I think, you know, either you're going to have to, I mean, you're talking about, I think, Mr. Acosta here, that it would break through.
Exactly.
Which was the old creek bed of Hither Creek there. Yeah, so, you know, I think you would probably have, you're going to have to deal with this bridge, I think, as long as possible. I don't know what your, nor the Lee roots are going to be here, it's going to be tough. So. But I don't think this, this, this particular action, I think, helps or hurts that concern.
Something that we're addressing in the coastal management plan, because it is, it is one section of beach there that is very vital.
Got you, yeah.
Yep. These, these are two sections, again, that were overlooked in the Surfside area. They're what is called Cherry Street, or sometimes known as Noshon Way. This is a small section in Tom Nevers that, again, we, because it looked like it had a road through there, in fact, it's really more of a walking path, which we've committed to keep anyway as part of any sort of final determination. It's brought forward by the butter. There's two final streets in the Madakisham area. Again, this is an area that, you know, would, these would probably go for some sort of open space and recreational designation. This is a section of Chase Lane, which, again, was not included in an earlier version. You can see that the end of Chase Lane functions to this point. And really, from this point on, there's really no need to maintain the road. This earlier section here, which leads you into a big wetland here, is already part of an earlier article.
Yeah, we took that.
Correct.
Last year.
Yep. So that, that covers the paper street articles. Again, these should all look familiar to you, they're kind of same group. 17, do you have this as the Smooth Homics parcel in your draft, Libby? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what?
Oh, Moreland Management, thank you.
16ers.
This is a property that's owned by the county. It was taken in 1959 for public beach purposes. It's within the zoning district of the Moreland Management District. And there is a management plan that the land bank largely takes care of this property. This article would, would allow the transfer of this property to the land bank, which, again, is already managing it. It would be subject to a one-big-beach easement, which has been the policy with other properties that are along the coast. And again, there's a companion article that allows the selectmen to put, reserve any easements, easement rights over this.
Why are we giving it to the land bank?
Because it's in the Moreland Management District, it has some very sensitive. plants and other issues that go with it, which is part of why, why they're managing it for us. Some of the surrounding property owners in the Cisco area have suggested that they might be a more active steward of this particular property.
May I ask a question of Andrew? Does this have anything to do with Austin Lockway? Is it?
It borders, it borders that street.
Because another reason for the land bank is that we've been, it's not very much money, but we've been helping contribute to the maintenance of the Austin Lockway Road, because we are a large property owner there.
Yep.
Maybe the land bank would take that on.
Right, and they do own some of the surrounding land as well.
It's a little easier for management purposes, as Andrew was saying, if there's one landowner of the large tracts versus a couple.
Just hate giving away land. And once the land bank gets it, we have no control in it. They say we do, but we don't. They do what they want.
I guess another option, just thinking out loud, is, uh, could you hire the land bank to do the management?
They're doing it now.
They're doing it now, so maybe that doesn't make sense. I got you, okay.
What the public discussion is.
Right. Yeah, and if you, you know, if you wanted to postpone that to, to the annual, that's fine. I mean, this article is a property on Dave Street. You can see that this is a remnant of the railroad bed. It does have a sewer line underneath it. It's adjacent to property that's being, oops, sorry, it's being redeveloped here, which is the new Cape Cod Five Bank is going in here.
Okay.
This property, you can see, is of limited use, but it, it actually would be, could be incorporated into either of these adjoining properties. The long-term plan here is also to create some sort of an open space here at this corner that we're envisioning that the land bank would be managing, so.
The high-pressure main goes under there, correct?
Correct. And we would retain a sewer easement over that property beyond this point. It enters onto private property and has the same sewer arrangement.
Andrew, why do I think there are walkway discussions related to this, or?
There is. There is a, there's a walkway that's used pretty actively. You can see a well-worn path on that now. And there's some stairways that go up to the adjoining parking lots. There's always been an idea to sort of knit this area together. That property is not very well-maintained if you've, if you've walked on those paths, and this is a chance, um, part of, part of the planning board approval allowed for a potential access down into where the commons is located.
Right.
So.
And maybe be maintained by the new owner or something like that.
Correct.
Gotcha, okay.
And with the sewer underneath, of course, there's not gonna be any buildings located on it. We still have to maintain the sewer availability over that property. So that's the end of that. The next one is, was the article submitted by the Water Company, which is the site of the former Stanpipe in Sconsett. That's been removed, as you know, and the property is under the jurisdiction of the Water Commissioners. The article would transfer it to the selectmen for some sort of sale. I think there's restrictions on how that money is used. If it was part of the bonding, it would go towards payment of the bond. Correct. Irene's saying yes. This article, which I believe is now three articles. This is property that we discussed with you back in January. We had missed the, um, the deadline, and at that time, you said, bring it back for the next town meeting, so here we are. It's property that's adjacent to the Newtown Cemetery, sorry, which is located here. The land in question, um, based on prior work that we had done, had, had never, we could not find a deed from the property owner into the town, although the town pretty much has maintained it for a long time. There are three parcels. Um, there is a parcel immediately adjacent to the cemetery that I know the cemetery commissioners are interested in. There is what had been a proposed road connection in between, which I think cemetery commissioners are interested in as well. And then there is a, a parcel here, which has wetlands and other things that probably wouldn't be suitable for cemetery purposes, but the idea would be to acquire that interest for open space.
That one, there'll be some costs associated with, right?
There, there are costs. We did have an appraisal done of that. Um, it's, it's all about finding the heirs of this person, which we've traced in the last study that we did, um, kind of to a dead end. People that lived in the nineteen thirties in New York, so, but there could be, because it's a, a large piece of property.
Is that what you meant by cost, that if people show up?
Yeah. I'm just curious as to how, how we pay for that. If, if the budget's already done for this year, and we appropriate this in this year, then does that become an issue?
This is an authorization issue, so there isn't, there isn't a monetary appropriation with this. It's an authorization for the selectmen to proceed ahead. If there, there may be alternative funding, at least for the open space parcel, which is probably what we would do first to, to see if there are any heirs that might pop up. And I think that's important to realize on all of these. These are authorizations for you to act. There may be good reasons in the future why you don't want to do it. You decide to defer things, but once it's at least voted, then, you know, we can move ahead with business if it's, um, if the time is right. Articles twenty-two and twenty-three, these are some random properties that I've worked with the finance office on. There are substantial back taxes on these properties that are accruing at quite a high rate. Many of these, you're gonna see that it's unlikely that there're gonna be owners that step forward on these. Most go back to the turn of the century, or they're suffering from severe erosion problems, and the owners are seeking to donate them. There is a handful of these lots here, past Millie's Bridge, which is here, that have been, this particular one has been in tax title since the early nineteen hundreds. These properties here have fallen into tax title. They now exceed the value of, of the properties in terms of the, the back taxes that are owed. Property here on Sheep Pond Road, as you can see, is in a, is in some sort of a trust, and it's difficult for them to just convey the property the taking would actually serve to clear that up, and that could be added as an open space parcel for the town. The same situation exists for this property here, Hummit Pond Road, and then this tiny piece up here in Clark Cove Road. This particular property in Surfside at the corner of Pochek is also in tax title. The last identifiable owners are from right around the turn of the nineteen hundreds, so, again, I don't think that we're gonna find these people. In Sconsett, there is a, a parcel here, which is all in the outwash plain sort of dune area. Most of these properties that we've targeted in the past have been for open space and not really good to encourage any building on. This property here on Tom Nevers Road, again, part of that nineteen sixteen subdivision that has fallen behind. And these are also in Sconsett property here, that used to have a building on it that's now out on the beach. And this particular property, we had complaints about its condition, and of course, there's no owner. That particular owner hasn't been identified since the nineteen forties. So, this, and, and there's a substantial backlog in taxes on all of these. This gives the board the authority to move ahead, and then to either dispose or to keep, depending on what you ultimately decide.
Yes, Rick. Just a question on that. Is there an alternative way? I mean, so if someone's not paying their taxes, and in effect, we foreclose on the property.
Right.
Is this the standard way to go about it, or is there a way where you, you don't have to come through town meeting lot by lot?
Yep. I think that there was a period in time when, you know, closer when you could identify some of these owners, that foreclosing on the taxes was a reasonable way to do it. But so many years and so many generations have now sort of left these where they have to actually start the process over again, and there's a, there's also a way where they can be reclaimed. It's the allowing the eminent domain to proceed. You have the right to deduct any back taxes from damage awards, so it's really the simplest way to get this sort of cleaned up.
But I'm all in favor of that. I just, if, if in the normal course, we had another piece where the taxes hadn't been paid for ten years, and clearly the party wasn't gonna come forward, would the sort of finance department work a process and foreclose on a more current basis?
Yes.
Okay.
I think, I think that, you know, that these are leftovers from the past.
Thanks.
Any other questions? And we'll, we still have another week to consider the adoption.
There's just a couple that I, I have concerns about putting on this special town meeting that I would rather see go in the spring, and one is the, the land bank transfer, and the other one was, um, oh god, I'm drawing a blank here now, but there was one other one there that, that I think may have some issues, that people are gonna wanna have a chance to decipher a little more. The others, like as Andrew said, are pretty straightforward. Oh, I know, it was the Sparks Avenue one, you know, uh, to just throw them into the special town meeting, just because we're having a special town meeting, when I don't think either one really has to happen before spring, um, you know.
I don't think there are time pressures on either one, Bobby.
I'd like to discuss them a little more before.
That's, that's a good idea.
Okay, we have a tape change, which is perfect timing here. Well, because we move into the special town election.
Okay.
Freezing, yes. Alan, did you have a comment to make?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Alan Reinhardt, chairman of the Cemetery Commission. I just want to address Bobby's concern about the Sparks Avenue takings. The, as you probably know, the town controls eight cemeteries. We know we have burial space for ashes only in Pulpus, and we have no space for regular interments that we know of at this point. The only possibility at this point is at Newtown Cemetery, and we do have a consultant coming in to assess that, and we're using a CPC grant to, to do that work. It's important that the town provides burial space in a public cemetery. There is, you know, state law that, that deals with that. I would urge you to consider these Sparks Avenue takings as being more urgent than might be, you might be thinking.
Okay. All right, thanks, Alan. Anyone else comment? Questions from the board?
My only comment on that is, is that I don't want to spend three nights at town meeting debating whether we should take some land for a cemetery, and this, this art, this town meeting was supposed to be a quick town meeting that's now gotten much longer. We have two citizens petitions articles here. They're gonna take quite a bit of time, and if it can wait till spring, I'd like to see it wait till spring.
Okay. Any other comments? Right, we'll move on to the next section. Selectmen, oh, Libby, do you have anything else under town manager?
Um, on the town meeting, no, but if, if you are thinking of taking those out or leaving them in, it would be helpful for me to know now, if, at all possible, so that I can get this a little, just a little easier to do numbering and legal review and that sort of thing.
All right, um, comments on?
Well, I mean, I, I understand Bobby's concern, the sense you get a low turnout and people don't fully vet the issues as, as well at a special that
Right, you know, it's, we just finished up our summer season. We're literally weeks away from this town meeting. No one's gonna have a chance to go to these public hearings and, and ask questions, and I, I have concerns that we're, we're gonna get, it's gonna appear that we're stuffing these down the people's throat. I, my concern with the, with the land bank one is I, I have grave concerns about once we turn land over to the land bank, that the town and the county lose control of that land, and, you know, it, it looks great now, let's put, give it to them, but what if ten years from now, we need that land for something else? We no longer have it, so if we don't need to turn that land over, I just sue not.
Well, just so we're clear, the, the other point of view is these are permissive, and once we get control, there's no reason we have to proceed on the other side in any case, so that if we're, it seems to me eventually, for example, on the Sparks Avenue ones, it's highly probable that we're gonna want to take them, period. What we do with them is a different matter, Bobby, so that, that's permissive to get the, it gets the title cleared, and right now, they're sort of in limbo, so if I was to come up with a contrary argument, we could proceed with a takings article, but not have a disposition article. That would get one step possibly under one of the three ones.
Let's see what happens. Leave them on.
I'm not really pushing to leave them on, I'm just trying to.
I would leave the Sparks Avenue on, just because, that Alan said it's of urgency. I would like to see the, the Morland's Management one pulled off.
It's part of, it's owned by the county now. I'm trying to remember what Andrew was saying.
It's owned by the county, and I, before we just go transfer county land to, to the land bank, just so they can manage it, I'd like to take a little time to really vet it.
So why don't we leave one on and one off?
Andrew has a comment.
Could, could I just ask, on that one, I, I understand your point on that, and that maybe any disposition should, you could just take that off. There is a home rule petition that, that involves transferring the county land to the town, which I think you should support that one, because.
I don't think you're pushing back on that, right?
No, no, not in that one. I'm not pushing back on that. Just the transfer of the land to the land bank.
So why don't we move forward on the one and not the disposition?
I'm fine with that. I mean, you know, this is, as you said, supposed to be a, you know, a sort of capsule town meeting, and if there's any concerns on the board, I just.
Yeah, and we don't want anything to stay in the county in case the state shows up, ever, right?
So, sorry, which one are you taking out, then?
The, uh, I don't, well, there's, I spoke, I don't know if you have an, an actual updated article on this, Libby. There was basically a disposition article, and there needed to be a home rule petition. Now, I spoke to town council today, and I don't know if they gave you the wording for that, but it, okay.
This is the Morland Management District one?
Yes. So, if we, if the.
They added language to it about the home rule petition, so it's in that article.
Okay, so, we would rewrite this, so it's simply a home rule petition to transfer this land from the county to the town. That's it. And that will at least.
That's step one.
That's step one. Then we can discuss it about giving it to the land bank and have a little time to vet it.
And we get it out of the county so that the state can't grab it.
Correct.
Right. All right, excellent. Any other comments on the, so?
And we'll leave the Sparks Avenue in there for now.
So, essentially, Libby, there's only one change, and it's not a number change, so.
Are you guys okay with the order?
Yeah.
Yep.
For now?
Yep.
Yeah. HCC's last, I see.
They're not last.
No, they're in the middle, right?
They're in the middle.
After, the zoning articles are after the HTC.
The zoning articles are before.
What do they see?
I think you're right, Bobby.
I think they're after. Do we need to maintain a quorum to get through the zoning articles? How does that work?
No.
Once we have a quorum, we're good?
The quorum is only needed for the appropriation of funds or the transfer of funds. It's a five percent quorum for an appropriation, a three percent quorum for a transfer. The other ones, you don't need a quorum.
Let me just ask this question, then. If the first night, we have a quorum, and we get through the bulk of this, and we have to go to a second night, do we need to quorum the second night?
Only if we aren't done with the financial articles.
What about the zoning?
The zoning does not require a quorum at a special town meeting.
So we could have fifty people there, and we'd be good?
Mm-hmm.
And hopefully, they won't be called, right, et cetera. Okay. Anything else for town managers reporting?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Um, selectmen report, selectmen's reports and comment. Scheduled date of two thousand twelve special town election to fill board of selectmen vacancy. All right, we have gotten new information, and we put this off till we have a full group. I know we all were supportive, but things have come up, so we're, we're discussing it again. And we have, at least from some sense, that we can't really do this until November, given. sense, that we can't really do this until November, given what the minimum requirements are in terms of timing and the like. So we do have that. Dates in November kind of vary depending on whether you count Thanksgiving holiday or not, and I think that's pretty much where we are. So it's either the last Tuesday or the second to last Tuesday, correct? Can I have that summed up correctly?
Yeah.
November.
Yeah.
Tuesday before, Tuesday after Thanksgiving?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
As early as possible, so. Any comments from the board with respect to whether to go forward?
I, like all of us, I'm sure, I've been going back and forth and agonizing over it a great deal, based on the fact that, whereas we started out thinking we might be able to do it in September, and now it's late November, and the fact that we're going to be unable to piggyback on another election, my inclination is to be slightly biased against having an election. However, I, I just wanted to remind everybody a couple of things. I'm sorry to make this about me, but I know the board is aware that due to longstanding, unchangeable plans made before I even decided to run, I'm going to have to miss two meetings in February. And I wanted everybody to be aware of that and factor that into your thinking. And it leads me to wonder whether or not, you know, we have, how much flexibility we might have with regard to, you know, choosing to meet on the fifth Friday, fifth Wednesday in January, in lieu of a meeting later on in February. For example, it leads me to wonder whether we have traditionally coordinated our travel and vacation schedules to minimize the times when we're both, you know, more than one of us knows we're going to be away. And then lastly, I, I just sort of have a question, which I'm hoping maybe Libby knows about the, relating to the need for a quorum on, say, a very routine licensing issue whereby we might start the meeting with, with three or four of us, and then for whatever reason, one or more of us had to sit it out, and we would be down to two voting members on a routine item. Is that?
I'd want to confirm that, Town Council, but I believe if, say, you have a four-member board, and one person had to sit out, and you left with three, is this what you're meaning?
Yeah.
What happens if we have a three-member board and one has to sit out?
And I believe that, that kicks in a sort of waiver on the recuse. You don't have to recuse, there's a.
The rule necessity?
Yeah, the rules.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And also, you could always bring something up the next meeting. I mean, some things are that critical, you have to act that night, but usually, another week won't make that much difference, so.
And I just, I just wanted to point out, too, that at your August 22 meeting, that actually happened when Bruce was away, and you had a three-member board, and somebody had to not, somebody didn't vote on something, and Greg actually consulted town council via email, and they said that it could be a, a two-person vote on that, because it was the quorum. It was the majority of the quorum present.
So I think those are all questions, Bruce.
Yeah, that resolves that one.
My senses are somewhat resolvable.
I just wanted to sort of make full disclosure on the issue of the, the February situation.
Right. And I, too, know of already, November 8, I won't be here. So, I mean, I think we're all going to be faced with the fact that there's going to be a juggle, and I think you're right, Bruce, this might be the first time we actually try to coordinate a little bit the agenda as well, so that we're not putting things that members have to recuse themselves necessarily from.
I know that it's been a policy of this board to meet every Wednesday forever, but it's not written in stone that we have to. If we could have a meeting on a Monday, as long as it's scheduled properly, and then we could go a week or 10 days and have another meeting, or two meetings in one week if we needed to, I think we could. I, I'm on the fence on this, be, just like you, Bruce. You know, originally, I was for having the election. I thought we could do it in September, October. The fact that we're going to do an election the end of November, and if anyone runs and, and plans to run again, they're going to have to run a campaign six weeks after they get sworn in. So it, it seems like a lot of work to have someone in here for four months. That being said, we saw it tonight, where we were doing appointments, and we had a two-two vote. So it is nice to have an odd number. You know, I could go either way on this, but, you know, as long as we all are in agreement that we can do some flexibility here as far as having meetings, maybe one week we have to meet on a Tuesday or a Thursday or whatever, or like you said, the fifth Wednesday of the month. As long as that doesn't become a major scheduling nightmare for staff and everyone else, then.
We noted our summer schedule.
Stand our summer schedule. Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, you know, they're off.
You guys are, this is your space on Wednesdays. It's, it's pretty full almost every other night.
Well, we can go back to the.
Well, we could always skip a week. We don't have to meet every week. We could say, due to the fact that two members are going to be away next week, we could skip a meet. We could have one long meeting, and then have another long meeting two weeks later if we had to.
We could make it work with four. I mean, there's no doubt we could make it work.
I mean, there, there are going to be times where we might have a two-two, which in effect is like a no vote. So that's, that may not be the end of the world. I, I must admit, I think we've all been a bit on the fence, but I'd probably come down just to be upfront. Sort of the time, energy commitment and all that goes into an election is, and I'm prepared to pass on one. So there you go.
I actually, I think public opinion is divided right down the middle, too. I've, I've asked a lot of people, and nobody appears to feel that strongly about it.
Right.
It's pretty evenly divided.
And the fact that you have two, three elections coming up with the primaries, or two elections, the primaries, and then the presidential election, the fact that all the election workers that are really volunteers, they don't get paid a lot when they do it, are going to have to do two in the next two months, and then have to do another one right afterwards.
Right. And special town.
And a special town.
So there's a lot of staff work. It's not, it's not just the out-of-pocket cost, it's a lot of effort.
I think we'd all be clear if the term was actually longer than it is, but it's a very short term. You know, you, you know, my feeling was that we have an obligation to fill the seat, but, you know, again, we're going to be chugging through a few months without it. So I'm feeling like you, that I'd rather have a united decision with the group than feel like one or two of us weren't very happy with it. So it's sounding to me consensus-wise.
Seems like we're all prepared to.
Let it, let it go for at least the time being. I suppose if it gets really onerous, we could make a different decision. So, you know, whatever the timetable means, but not to leave it hanging out there, but if that's all right with the group, I think.
It's all right with me, Patty.
Do you want us to vote on it, Patty, so it's on record that we?
You know, I think we should, we, do we vote to, to have one?
Actually, I, I recall that evening, like, it was a consensus that, but we did want to get the facts about the timing and the schedule before us, before we made a final decision.
Whatever you're comfortable with. I, I sort of feel like it's like voting about not doing something, so it's not really necessary.
Yeah. I don't think a motion is necessary. It's clear that we've had a public discussion on the matter, and without a motion on the table, our decision, I think, is clear as it could be.
All right. Sounds great. All right. Committee reports. Anybody with committee reports? I think I talked enough about the FEMA, and we're going to have a better presentation than I can stumble through. There's way too many abbreviations for me to actually follow with much success, but.
Patty, I don't have a committee report, but just sort of looking at agendas coming up, Libby, there are a number of items, and maybe if you just sort of helped us get a sense for when they might come up. And we've talked about, for example, the taxi cab issue, and to me, it's important to have a discussion about that before it leaves our minds, for example. I know we have landfill issues coming up, Patty. I had mentioned a concern to clarify our responsibilities for, let's say, Baxter Road or other roads that are impacted by erosion, because that's a topical issue. And there may be other things on other board members' minds, so it's nice to get them sort of slotted in some way.
I can give you a little bit of information on some of those items. Next week, you have on, on, and this may go beyond what the items that you just mentioned, but next week, we're having a discussion about the Department of Revenue Report. You're having a wastewater update next week. That could be a bit lengthy. You're reviewing end-of-year fiscal 12 solid waste and sewer enterprise fund budgets. On the night, and you're adopting the warrant, on the 19th, we've got the landfill presentation that we discussed, solid waste options and alternatives, with George Aronson and John Georgio present to review and analysis that we discussed in an executive session in July. Taxis, regulation amendments are being worked on. They are not ready yet. We're not ready to schedule a public hearing yet, but we will be, and maybe before we actually schedule the hearing, the chief can come in and review the types of things that we're talking about.
I think that would be helpful, because I suspect we all have these things floating in our mind. Here's an idea, and if you go too far down with the regulations before you open them up to us, I think that's a problem.
We might have a little input in that.
We hear a lot about the taxis.
Yep. At some time before the end of the month, town administration will be presenting you with capital, fiscal 14 capital project recommendations. And what were the other?
I mentioned Baxter Road, because I know that obviously there are issues there about what happens if, and it's a little bit related to Sheep Pond, when we had to deal with Sheep Pond Road. Where does responsibility lie? And just to be clear, at some point, and Bobby's going to want to be dealing with that with the coastal management plan, but it's, it's also somewhat bigger than that.
We need to start coming up with a contingency plan, so it doesn't all of a sudden jump on us.
Right.
Maybe an update on Sheep Pond Road would be a good way to lead into the conversation on Baxter.
That might be fine.
Because I think they're in process right now, and they've hit some snags and solved them, I believe, so.
Okay. Anyway.
That would be helpful. All right. Anything else for committee reports? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Can you sign one?